Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with
Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. Township of Olbridge, zoning board of adjustment regular meeting, October 19, 2023. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Olbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Gill?
Here.
And myself, Ms. Porcelli. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of housekeeping items. Everybody has a phone. Please silence it during the meeting so we don't interrupt it. Also, we're being, so you know, we're being televised on CATV, Channel 15, as well as YouTube Live. You can review the meetings on the internet. We have some small housekeeping issues that the attorney is going to be taking care of before we start the actual applications. We will go, if you happen to have an agenda, we will go in the same order that the agenda lists. We'll start with resolutions. These will be handled by the board attorney to my right, Mr. Clancy. It's 33-2023Z, Priscilla Zefaro. Mr. Clancy?
Yes, this was from our meeting back on September 21, 2023. This relates back to 543 Texas Road, Block 20002, Lot 17. The application was to legalize the expansion of a driveway. There was a request for relief for a driveway setback, side setback where there is a five feet and also a maximum width of 54 where there was, 30 was the maximum. There was testimony heard on that day, and resolution was approved. And it would appear that the, there was nothing outside ordinary conditions that are required for this. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Board members, does someone want to move them for adoption, please?
Connor, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Testaverde.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 43-2023Z, Doris and James Sordos, C. Varance as well. Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Chairman, another one from September 21, 2023. This was for 22 Morris Town Road in Madawan. It was Block 3235, Lot 6. This was a deck improvement that they were seeking to legalize. Side setback issue there, and also a minimum on that, which they were seeking relief from. The board did hear testimony on that day, did vote to approve it. No unusual conditions other than what we would ordinarily see there. This is on for approval tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Connor, I'll move it.
Chevalier, a second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 46-2023Z, Jesus Sojaco?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, another one from September 21, 2023. The application was for 3 Andrews Street here in Olbridge. The block number was 15511, Lot 654. This was another driveway expansion which was seeking to be legalized. Issue was the side setback. There was, they were down to zero feet where five feet was required. Board heard testimony and did vote in favor of this with no unusual conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. The only thing I recognize, or it says Lot 1654 on the resolution.
Oh, it looks like up top it may have omitted the one, so we'll get a corrected version of this.
Okay, just for the record.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Someone want to move that for adoption, please?
I'm moving Stoner.
Second, Chevalier.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 48-2023, Nancy and David Navarro. Mr. Clancy?
Yes, this was another one from September 21, 2023. The location was 8 Thomas Street in Olbridge, Block 15549, Lot 180. This was installation of some gazebos where there was an issue with the side setback and also with a rear setback on two separate gazebos. The board heard testimony that night. It did go for a vote and was approved with the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it for adoption, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Testaverde.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, the last resolution we have is 47-2023Z, Ryan Thomas Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was the last one from September 21, 2023. This was 468 East Greystone Road in Olbridge around the corner from that other Texas Road property. The block was 20002, Lot 19. This was another driveway issue. They were seeking relief on the side setback and also for the maximum width. The board heard testimony, went through a vote, and was approved on that date and without any, anything other than the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight.
Thank you, sir. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it, Connor. Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Same applies, minutes June 15, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 6, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 6, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 48-2023, Nancy and David Navarro. Mr. Clancy?
Yes, this was another one from September 21, 2023. The location was 8 Thomas Street in Olbridge, Block 15549, Lot 180. This was installation of some gazebos where there was an issue with the side setback and also with a rear setback on two separate gazebos. The board heard testimony that night. It did go for a vote and was approved with the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it for adoption, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Testaverde.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, the last resolution we have is 47-2023Z, Ryan Thomas Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was the last one from September 21, 2023. This was 468 East Greystone Road in Olbridge around the corner from that other Texas Road property. The block was 20002, Lot 19. This was another driveway issue. They were seeking relief on the side setback and also for the maximum width. The board heard testimony, went through a vote, and was approved on that date and without any, anything other than the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight.
Thank you, sir. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it, Connor. Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Item four on the agenda this evening is minutes. There is six of them here. I have to call them individually. Minutes from the June 1, 2023 meeting. Without hearing any objection or suggestions for deletions or comments, I'd ask someone to move that for adoption. Seeing none, someone move it, please?
I'll move it, I'll move it, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Same applies, minutes June 15, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 6, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 6, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Same applies, minutes June 15, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Item four on the agenda this evening is minutes. There is six of them here. I have to call them individually. Minutes from the June 1, 2023 meeting. Without hearing any objection or suggestions for deletions or comments, I'd ask someone to move that for adoption. Seeing none, someone move it, please?
I'll move it, I'll move it, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Same applies, minutes June 15, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, the last resolution we have is 47-2023Z, Ryan Thomas Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was the last one from September 21, 2023. This was 468 East Greystone Road in Olbridge around the corner from that other Texas Road property. The block was 20002, Lot 19. This was another driveway issue. They were seeking relief on the side setback and also for the maximum width. The board heard testimony, went through a vote, and was approved on that date and without any, anything other than the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight.
Thank you, sir. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it, Connor. Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, the last resolution we have is 47-2023Z, Ryan Thomas Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was the last one from September 21, 2023. This was 468 East Greystone Road in Olbridge around the corner from that other Texas Road property. The block was 20002, Lot 19. This was another driveway issue. They were seeking relief on the side setback and also for the maximum width. The board heard testimony, went through a vote, and was approved on that date and without any, anything other than the ordinary conditions. This is on for approval tonight.
Thank you, sir. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
Move it, Connor. Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 6, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrew.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Minutes of July 20, 2023.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Again, thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you very much. It was a little wordy, but the locations now start. This is the first one up, 36-2023Z, Wellington Pierre. This is the R15 Zone Block 3236, Lot 28. Physical location's 102 Autumn Road, gazebo, patio, and fence. Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Good evening. And
Diane Sauv, my wife.
You may be seated at the table. You can share that mic right in the middle. If you're both going to testify, sir, we would, the board attorney would swear both of you. And I recall last time you both didn't speak, right?
Yes.
So he'll swear you both in again.
Just, I think you may need to do something to turn that microphone on. There's probably a button.
It should turn green.
Yeah, there we go. Now we're good. Okay, if you would both just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before this board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then just one at a time state your full names.
Wellington Pierre.
Diane Sauv Pierre.
Okay, thank you so much.
For those in the audience who are watching at home, this is a matter where there was some items, I believe, built during COVID time for the usage of your own property. And apparently it was determined that they were done without permitting, without respect to the variances. So you're here seeking those. I know that you, we had a Zoom meeting the last time we spoke, and now all the meetings are going to be live here.
Okay.
As I instructed you last time, you're going to tell us what, this time you're going to tell us what happened since then and what relief you're still seeking, what have you done on the property to change those irregularities?
Okay.
So at your own pace, sir, you can go right ahead.
All right. So since then, we were waiting because the next door neighbor had moved out, and we were waiting for the new neighbors to move in to see what we were going to do with the 104 side of the fence. So finally, we spoke to the, our next door neighbor, and what they're going to do is they're going to get the permit for the fence that's on their side. And we moved the fence in the back, and we moved the patio that was encroaching on their, on their property also. So we moved, we moved the patio and we moved the fence to two feet from the back.
That was like the kitchen area?
The kitchen area.
You're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's off the property line?
Yes.
And you said, what else did you move?
And we moved the back fence, two feet, two feet in.
Moved it in, so it's in line with your property?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the fence that is adjoining to the south of you, those people are going to seek?
They're going to claim the fence as being theirs.
Right. Well, they're going to get a permit.
They're going to get the permit. We got the paperwork from
I was, I was going to step in. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, why don't you, please?
So I spoke with Mr. Pierre, and we were discussing the alternative. Since fences don't require a setback, they could theoretically be on the property line. The issue, as Mr. Clancy raised at our last session, was that we can't authorize as the board an encroachment onto an adjacent parcel, so we had to seek an alternative solution. Obviously, the most practical is to relocate the fence. However, Mr. Pierre did express an interest in trying to work out an agreement with the neighboring property to try to keep the encroachment. Now, with regards to the patio, that was a little less practical, so he moved that. But with regard to the fence, I believe he's entered into a private agreement with the next door neighbor, that the next door neighbor is going to pull the fence permit for their property, which would then be a legal conforming fence for the neighbor. And then whatever agreement privately they have, you know, to secure that, they were going to do. I did have occasion to speak with the new owner. He did seem to be in line with this maneuver or this agreement. I would just caution the board that, or I would just advise the board, not necessarily caution the board, that should he not be able to secure that approval and I don't get that permit within a specified time we would work out, we would make him relocate the fence through our code enforcement side if the board decided to look favorably on the application.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
No problem, Chairman.
Mr. Clancy?
I took a look at the revised layout. This is, looks like a, a good potential solution to this. If the, if the landowner that the fence is located on is the one who's going to make the, the application for the fence, certainly he's allowed to have a fence on his property. It looks like, just from double checking the drawing, it looks like it's either entirely on the property line or just into the other property, right? I don't think any of it's exclusively on your property side, right?
It looks like
No.
Looks like it's on the, right on the line and then goes off into theirs. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's like from, it's like eight, I think they said it was eight inches and then one, it is until one and a half.
Do you have anything in writing at this point from this, from the new neighbor?
He's filling, he's filling out the application, and he's waiting for his survey to come in.
Oh, okay. Sounds, sounds positive.
We literally just had the conversation Tuesday, and I think there was a little bit of confusion because Mr. Pierre called my office, kind of unrelated to the board activity, to try to square this away before the 31st meeting. And then we realized the confusion there. There is no 31st meeting. He had signed his, his tolling of time and the extension for the application so that it wouldn't expire. So he was under the impression that we were having a meeting on Tuesday, and he thought he had a little more time to get this taken care of. So we were kind of under a time crunch this week.
So that solves the fence issue. The kitchen issue's been taken care of because they've moved it back, correct?
They still need a setback variance for the patio area because it will be within three feet of the property line, but it is no longer encroaching on the neighboring property line.
So we, and then the canopy in the back or the gazebo, whatever we're calling that?
And the gazebo in the back?
Setback issue.
That's a setback issue as well. It's supposed to be 10 feet, and I believe it was, what, five feet?
Yeah, five feet, yeah. And would that sum up all of them, Mr. Gill?
That would sum up the issues on the property.
The two, the kitchen?
The two. The patio where the kitchen is located and the setback for the canopy.
And the fence in the back has already been moved in?
It's already been moved in. We will verify that in the field. We have not had occasion to do that yet.
I have pictures if you want.
We like to trust you. I mean, if you're telling us you did it, they're going to check anyway.
That's all right. I'll go out and ruin somebody's day.
I'll take you at your word, but you're going to deal with them.
Just for clarity, are, this is on the, on the kitchen patio, the outdoor kitchen patio?
Yes.
That's, it looks almost like a zero setback where, I guess, five is
It's over?
Three, three is required.
And now it's been shifted, but it's still
It's right on the line, right? More or less?
No, I believe he moved it two feet, he testified. So there was about a four to six inch encroachment, so it would probably still be about a half a foot to two foot from the property line where the three foot is required. That's why I said it's still a variance condition.
Okay.
So two foot where three foot is required is, I guess, what we're
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
No problem.
Mr. Pierre, anything else you want to tell us?
No, that's basically it.
Okay. Let me see if the board has any questions for you. Okay, I'll start on my left.
Yeah, I'm curious. How come you can't move the canopy in?
Because actually it's bolted into the, the, into the pavers. Bolted into the pavers. And we, I'm not sure how to, like, the, the feet that they want, I'm not sure how they want me to, with it, like
You'd need to move it five feet.
Five feet?
You'd have to move it a little, like, close to five feet. And, yeah, you can't
Okay.
That, that's everything, I think.
I believe that's it. We can vote with Adam, then we can put the, you wanna wait or vote the exact number?
I, I, I trust Mr. Gill's estimation that it's 15 to 18. If you think that, if the board feels comfortable voting with that estimate, we can plug in the exact number. I can, I'm looking at the, at the site plan as we're speaking here, it's well with, well within the 40, it looks like it's, you know, everybody, everybody on the board has the same.
Right, the survey, where, you understand what he's talking about, that, that, we have to have the exact number.
Okay.
That's what the code official, the zoning official is going to do, he's gonna get a?
Anytime there's a corner lot, you technically have two front yards when it comes to zoning. So even though you, when you look at your house, it's a backyard, there's actually a, a second front setback that's required for that accessory structure, that canopy. So it's, it's another variance. We're just gonna get a measurement for it and, you know, if, if you wanna put it to a, to a vote tonight, we can certainly entertain that.
He's gotta figure it out right now for us.
He's pretty, he's working on the fly tonight. So any, any, any questions about what I just explained to you?
Um, yeah, the, the, you said there's two front yards, so the, where the backyard is, so we're not supposed to build anything there, or like, I'm, I'm, I don't understand that part.
There's minimum setbacks with this stuff. So, um, you know, as far as the front setback goes, how far something from the front of the street needs to go back, and there's also those side setback issues which affected like your, that kitchen, outdoor kitchen area, there's a side setback which is smaller because it's a side yard. When you look at most houses, you think of a front yard being, being set back a certain amount.
Right.
The amount that's required on a front setback when there's already a, a main structure there depends upon the location of that main structure. That's why it's that, kind of that oddball 42.3 feet minimum, okay? Because this is not the main structure of the house. So Mr. Gill's just gonna measure what it actually is right now, so we can include that as, as part of the variances. So I understand it's a little weird, because when you look at your house, you think the front door is where the front of the house is.
Right.
When you have a corner lot like you guys do, you actually technically have two front yards, so when you do stuff like that, applications like this, it, it sometimes requires variances to overcome that, and that's where we're at.
Oh, okay.
So the actual setback is 19 and a half feet.
Wow, pretty good.
It's 19.5 where 42.3 is?
Is required. And that's because you're not allowed accessory structures in the front yard, and that's technically a front yard.
Everybody good with this on the board? There would be three Cs, I can take them together, correct?
Yes.
All right, for the three C variances, someone in favor of moving for approval? Connor? I'll move it for approval.
Testaverde, second.
Seconds, uh, second by Ms. Testaverde. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, and I do always say to people in the township, it's great when you make improvements on your home and your property, but always contact the township first. It's a lot easier to do it in the right order versus, you know, having to come in here.
Right.
All right, thank you very much for your appearance. You'll have a resolution by our next meeting, then you'll be able to get any of his permits. All right, any questions?
No.
Thanks again for coming in, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next matter before the board tonight is 092023Z. Nicholas Sansevero, I hope I said that right. 73 Athens for a sunroom. It's to legitimize a sunroom that was previously constructed without permits and violates the side yard setback requiring C variances, block 4,000.13, lot 25. Mr. S, Mr. Sir, did I say it right?
Sansevero.
Sansevero. Uh, board attorney's gonna swear you in, sir.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can lower your hand and just state your name for the record.
Nicholas Sansevero.
You can be seated, sir.
Thank you.
The microphone's still green, okay, good. We know why you're here, um, and what I instruct all the people, you're not represented by council, you don't have any professionals testifying tonight on your behalf, correct?
No.
So what you need to do now that you're here before the board, the board wants to hear what happened, how you did it, why you did it, and then of course, Mr. Gill, the zoning officer's gonna tell us why you're here for a variance.
Okay.
Okay? We'll go back and forth, you may have questions of us, we may have questions for you. Public portion will come before, and then I'll ask if you want us to take a vote, okay?
Understood.
Proceed, sir.
So again, with COVID taking place, we initially started the permit process. During that, while we were waiting, I had some health issues, I had a brain tumor, and then I ended up getting COVID twice. So when the project was commencing, I couldn't stop it because the, when they were building the sunroom, they, they continued with the materials and, and stuff like that. So once it was finished, I ended up getting the letter from the township to put in for the permits and the, and the variance and so forth, so, I mean, and that's where, fast forward to now, and, and that's what I did, with the 200-foot radius with my neighbors and, and I did have some neighbors come to me and then I explained what was going on and they were, you know, there, there's been no issue on it, but?
Okay, uh, well, it sounds like you got the process going in the right way. I'm sorry to hear about your illness.
Thank you.
Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant is here because he constructed a 16 by 24 sunroom prior to the issuance of the zoning and construction permit. At the time of review, it was determined that the sunroom was too close to the property line. The applicant was proposing a four-foot setback, 4.19 feet, where a minimum 10-foot is required. Since the structure was already constructed, there really wasn't a conversation that we could have about relocating it without it affecting basically the structure as it exists today. The applicant opted to come to the board this evening and try to legitimize that addition.
So just the, uh, six, the five and a half foot setback?
Five and, five and a half foot setback variance, correct.
Otherwise, he wouldn't be here, right?
Otherwise, he would not be here, Chairman.
Board members on my left, questions? On my right?
Any, um, any objection from neighbors? Any issues?
We'll, we'll find that out when we get to, when we get to the public, but, uh, did you hear from it, you said somebody came and asked about it, right?
Yeah, uh, I had neighbors from the left and right, my, and the neighbors who were right next door to me, they, they don't have an issue.
Okay, have you lived there quite a while?
Almost 10 years.
Okay, so you get along with your neighbors?
Very much so.
So you're not gonna turn around and somebody's gonna be here and talk behind your back and say they don't want?
I hope not.
Okay. All right, any other questions from anybody? It's pretty straightforward, I guess. Mr. Clancy?
Yeah, it looks like we just have the single variance, um, side setback. The, now the letter said four feet, but it's five and a half, the more correct?
No, 4.19.
Four point?
I apologize if I mispoke.
So it's a, it's effectively a four-foot?
Setback.
Setback where 10 is required. Um, other than that, it, it seems like it's a compliant, uh, compliant structure.
Why didn't you line it up with the house? Is there a reason, there's doors or something there or?
No, it's, it's just the way we had it set at the time.
Oh, okay. If it was with the house, he wouldn't be here, right?
Correct, I don't recall. Was there a deck back there before or?
Is there something that would interfere you to the left of it? I mean, as you look at the survey, if it was, if it was slid over, right?
Yes.
It would be in line with the rest of your house?
Uh, pretty much.
But is there something there in the way that you couldn't?
Oh, no. No, there's nothing there now.
Okay. Okay, but that's, that's the only issue, right?
That is the only issue, Chairman.
Uh, absent any questions right now, I'm gonna go to public portion. You have a problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay, public portion, I'm opening up now. 73 Athens Avenue for a sunroom, looking to legitimize the build of a sunroom. Anyone here in the audience this evening have any comment? Please stand up, man. Go to the microphone.
Is that on?
Uh, is it?
Hi.
Okay, it's on. A board attorney will swear you in before you give any testimony.
Just raise your right hand if you'd be so kind.
Yep.
You solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, you can lower your hand, just, can you give us your name, please?
Brianny Penya.
How do you spell your first name? And spell your last name for me, please?
P-E-N-A.
Excellent, thank you.
I have no objections. I'm a student from Rutgers, so I'm here on assignment from a professor, so I'm not trying to, you know, impede the process or anything. My question is, when did you decide to build the sunroom?
I think he said during COVID, but he can answer, you don't have to answer, sir, but I mean, if you don't mind answering the?
It was during, it was during the COVID period.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, this for, uh, work-related?
James White is my professor.
Okay, got it. I'll give you one more question. Go ahead, you got another one or no?
No.
You sat here all night for one question? Okay, well, thank you.
Light work.
All right, anybody else in the room wanna have any comments or questions? I'm gonna close the public portion at this point. Uh, final comments, sir? None? Okay, um, is this for your health as well? Did you do this for the family, just so you could have a?
Yeah, just, uh, trying to do something nice.
Okay, well, it probably is. Someone in favor of, this is a single C variance, right?
Correct.
4.19 where 10 required on the setback. Someone wanna move that?
Move it, Andrews.
For approval? Yes?
Andrews.
Is there a second for approval?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. It's been approved, you'll get a, uh, resolution next meeting. And as I said before, to, to, to the homeowners, it's great when they stay here in the community, improve your own home, make your property better. Just check, check in with the, with the officials first, and then you don't have to go through that.
Now, do I have to appear at the next meeting or?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nope, just check with the building department.
Okay.
It'll be issued by the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Thank you for your appearance, sir.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Feel better.
This is, uh, next matter is 41 dash 2023Z. Brian Selhoffer, this is R5 Zone Block 25, Lot 620. Physical location, 620 Greenwood Avenue for a strad, a shed, um, excuse me, constructed by a prior owner. Applicant seeks to legitimize a 10 by 16 shed. Constructed by the previous owner without a permit. Shed violates both required side and rear yard setbacks. Sir? Come forward. You gonna be the only one testifying? You know what, she's, tell her to come up because she's gonna, she's gonna want to say anything. I know, I know this.
It'll be on the right home.
Yeah, get it out now because you'll have to listen to it on the way.
It's all good.
You're both gonna be sworn in, okay? And then you can both take a seat. Mr. Clancy?
Just raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before this board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can lower your hands, and then just one at a time, can we have your names?
Brian Selhoffer?
Yep.
Michelle Selhoffer.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And sir, if you'd move that microphone in between the two of you, because I have a feeling both guys?
How about that?
Okay, you heard the same, um?
Yes.
Opening that I tell everyone, you know, you're gonna tell us why you're here, what happened, et cetera. You may have questions, we may have questions, public portion vote.
Gotcha.
Goes just like that.
In a nutshell, uh, when we purchased the property, there was an existing shed there. And in our papers from the lawyer, all permits, whatever, blah, 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 I don't remember the exact wording. Well, apparently, the township missed it, our attorney missed it, their attorney missed it. I just assumed that, that was in there. So when Sandy came, uh, we had a couple limbs down that damaged the existing shed. And not talking to the township, it was easier for me to fix the roof and add on to the front of the shed instead of fixing what was there, so I might have made it a little bit larger
So I might have made it a little bit larger than what was required under the, I think it was 150 square foot. So I didn't put the shed in the current location. It was there when we got there. So just trying to get a permit and a variance for it.
Okay, well, I thank you for your candidness.
No problem.
Let's see what the zoning officer has to tell the board. Mr. Gill.
Well, Chairman, in your description and opening statement, you pretty much summed it up nicely. The applicant's here this evening because there is an existing shed. And while the existing condition may have met the requirements, there was some repairs and a slight enlargement to it that dictated a variance would have been necessary or a relocation of the shed to a different place. But that was done years and years ago. The structure has existed, and we've verified since at least 2014, some of the software that we use in the office goes back that far, to see that the shed is basically what it is. There was a series of neighborhood complaints that arose from one particular property that had a bunch of property maintenance issues and started sharing with the rest of the community. And this was one of the things that we identified as, oh, it did increase in size a little bit, there was an issue here, and now we're obligated to obviously correct these issues. Because of the configuration of lot and the way that the Selhoffers have enjoyed their property for so many years, they opted to come this evening. The technical issue is that the shed was approximately three feet from the property line on the side, on the rear yard and 6.5 feet from the side yard where a minimum of 10-foot is required for both sides. I say again, at 150 square feet or less, it wouldn't have needed a variance. So this is technically a new condition, but as you understand what the condition, what the situation was.
You understand that now, sir?
Yes.
Let me see if board members have any questions. Right to my left?
So the shed's nine years old.
When did you move in, sir?
10 years.
10 years? So it was there then?
In May of 2012. The shed was there prior to our purchase.
To us. And it's in good condition?
Yes.
And filled.
That's what it's for.
All right, thanks.
You got roof damage and you fixed it all?
You said that there was roof damage from Sandy and then there was structural roof damage to the front of it. So two different spots. And instead of just fixing the roof, the front wall, I basically rebuilt and redid the roof.
So it's in presentable condition, obviously.
Hundred percent.
Anything else?
No.
On my left? None? On my right?
No.
Mr. Clancy?
Sounds like it got damaged like three months after you moved in, right? It was right around what Sandy was.
Well, Sandy was what?
2012. It was like on Halloween, 2012. So, yeah, not long after that.
June, July.
Understood.
Yeah, five months.
Yeah. Yep, so there's the, it looks like there's two C variances proposed for the board. There's a rear setback of three foot where 10-foot is required, side setback of six-and-a-half where 10 is required.
I got to go to public on this, okay? Make sure that there's nobody here that wants to complain. This matter, 41-2023Z, the location 620 Greenwood Avenue. Anyone have comment on this matter or want to be heard before the board? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Final comments? I'm assuming you want me to take a vote?
Please.
Please. I told you your wife was going to speak. I'm betting a thousand on these, I'm telling you. Okay, as the attorney just told the board members, 6.6 and 3 where 10 is required, right?
Correct.
Setbacks. Someone want to move it for approval or?
Andrews will move it.
For approval? Okay, is there a second?
Second, Chevalier.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, and I'm glad you made it into better condition, so it's more serviceable to you. And again, as I say, it's easier to check on these things than it is, but I think you did your due diligence when you bought the property. But I guess sometimes these things slip through the cracks.
Yeah.
In the papers from the lawyer, it said all permits, applications, whatever, it was supposed to be covered. However, my lawyer, I guess, didn't look into it. Their lawyer didn't look into it, so.
We have good lawyers.
Easy to blame.
I don't think I should say anything else. You're set. Thank you for appearing tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
All right. So now I see two different sets. I see a gentleman over here and I see two over here, and I know you're going to be the applicant, right? And I hope that guy's not going to talk against you, but we'll find out. 56-2023Z, Frank Correio?
Correio, yes.
Come on up, sir. This is our six-zone block 18009 lot 23. Physical location's 31 Pierceall Road. Applicant proposes to legitimate, legitimize a driveway expansion that was previously done without approvals and violates the required side yard requiring C variance. So Mr. Correio, this other gentleman is?
My neighbor. What driveway is that?
Okay, you're going to testify?
Yes.
Okay. Is he going to testify?
Yes.
He is, okay.
Well, I'm only testifying that I don't care.
Okay, well, that's in the public.
Probably better for the public.
That's for the public portion. You could sit right down there.
Okay.
And sir, you can, you can take us, as soon as he swears you in. Don't change your mind, by the way.
All right, can you just raise your right hand for me, please? And step in front of that, just so I pick you up. Perfect. You solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can lower your hand and just state your name for the record.
Frank Correio.
Okay, Mr. Correio, come have a seat.
Thanks.
All right. You're last in line tonight, but we know why you're here, as I gave the opening statement to all the others. Tell us in your own words what happened, how it happened. We'll ask Mr. Gill why you're here.
I had a driveway constructed by a contractor. He told me that I didn't need a permit, I only needed a permit if I was disturbing the curb.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
This is televised, so we'd have to.
Right, okay.
We want it picked up. You can start over again.
Before I had the driveway done, I looked around the neighborhood to see everybody else's driveway, and I seen there was dozens and dozens of driveways that were up to the property line. So I figured, okay, let me call a contractor and, you know, expand my driveway. And I had spoken to him about a permit, and he said I didn't need one. My neighbor didn't, you know, other neighbors didn't need permits, they obviously had them done years ago. So he said I only needed a permit if I was disturbing the curb. I says, okay, we'll just leave the curb go, and we'll just bring the driveway up to, you know, up to the edge of the property line. I put a Belgian block over there, so my runoff won't go to my neighbor's property, and all the water would run straight down to the street where the sewer is at. I have pictures if that would help.
We'll look at some pictures, why not? We have your survey, so we.
Yeah, I actually have pictures of, especially during the hard rain.
Okay. I'm curious, what you said, the water flows where?
Now it flows down the street. Before, when it was all dirt there, it would flow all the way into my neighbor's property.
Okay. Thank you. While you're doing that, you can, you can walk up.
Oh.
Just don't trip over any of the wires and maybe up front. And we'll pass that around. Yep. Anything else you want to tell us at this point?
Yeah, I have a couple of other pictures over here, what it would look like if I had to go take it away.
So is that all the three pictures we're going to see? All three of those?
Yeah, I mean, I have other pictures of other people's driveways, but.
Let's talk about these first.
Yeah.
And we're going to mark these as exhibits. This picture is what, sir?
That is the side of my house where my neighbor is, and during the heavy rains, a lot of the water would just run off the side. So when I had the driveway constructed, it stopped that.
Okay, that'll be A1.
So the grass is your neighbor's property?
Yes.
We'll just let the board members take a moment to review them, okay?
And one more thing, my other neighbor on the other side.
Speak into the microphone, sir.
My neighbor on the other side of my house, when he had his driveway done, he built actually a wall which stopped all the runoff coming onto my property, which was really, really good, because I don't get, I didn't get any water coming into the side of the house where the basement windows are. So, you know, when I had this done, I was basically thinking the same thing with my neighbor on that side. So if I built a, you know, like a kind of a wall, it was a Belgian block. No water runs off to his property, it runs all the way down, and I have the availability of being able to park my vehicles and my son's vehicle on the driveway.
That's what's depicted in this picture, Correio?
Yes.
Correct? You're talking about the Belgian block over here and the expansion?
Right.
Okay, A2. And this one, sir?
That's what it would look like if, where the bucket is, if I had to cut all that back. It would destroy the.
That would be the width?
Yeah, it would basically destroy the whole thing, and I wouldn't be able to open up the gate if I put another barrier over there.
A3? A3? All right, anything else you're going to show us at this point?
I just have other pictures of my, the neighborhood.
I think we got the gist of it with that. You saying that other people in the neighborhood have done similar.
About 80 of them, I counted.
80?
Yeah.
On your street?
In my neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll go to the zoning officer, we're going to ask him about this, okay? I'll come back to you if you have more.
All right.
Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Chairman. As the applicant has already testified, there was an expansion of a driveway that was, that was affected in June, I believe, or July of this year. The applicant proposed or installed a driveway that was zero feet from the right side property line or the northerly, westerly property line where a five-foot setback is required. I think it's important to note that the driveway doesn't exactly follow the property line. It touches the property line, and that's why the zero setback was called out. But it ranges from zero up to about two, two-and-a-half feet as it approaches the street. So there is a little bit of a setback present for most of it. In discussing the alternatives and correcting the matters, the applicant engaged in these studies of figuring out how much he would have to remove and realized that it would basically undo everything that he was attempting to do, and decided after doing a survey of the properties in the neighborhood that soliciting a variance might be the most, the best course for him. I would note and just show for the record that the applicant's survey shows the easterly property line or the left side of the property, it shows a similar Belgian curb which he was describing when he was testifying. And an asphalt driveway. One of the things that we've learned is that the, commencing in 2016, the standard for parking in driveways has been on the books for decades, maybe even as far back in some iteration to the inception of our land development ordinance. But we didn't start requiring permits for driveways until 2015. So many of our older communities, more developed communities, have this condition where many of the driveways are built out. So now we're just enforcing the ordinance that's in play through the permit process, and this is what occurs.
Thank you.
But that's why they're here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Questions on my left with the applicant? Or the Gil? Not someone?
I had gotten a notice on my doorstep from Mr. Farrell, Mike Farrell.
One of our code enforcement officers.
So with the other residents, 80 residents in your neighborhood, having the same situation, are we going to be faced with that also?
No, what happened was this was, this was, our inspectors, unless they catch the work in progress, which I don't believe was the case, was that the case?
No, I've had the driveway for over a year and a half.
What happens is, it's complaint-driven. We receive a concern, someone did a work without permits, and we investigated and found that there was a situation where a permit wasn't obtained. If we can establish that the driveway predates the 2015 or 2016, January 1st, 2016 cutoff, then we obviously don't go after them because we have no way of knowing when it was done, and it wasn't required to have a permit at the time that it was done. It's only for things that were done post-2016. So those other 80 would not have a problem.
Anybody else?
That's where I got the idea from, you know, making it wide like that. Because it just looked nice, you know, to have a wide driveway and be able to park your vehicles on the driveway with, you know, no real issues.
Get them off the street.
Get them off the street.
Mr. Scogno, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the board? To my right?
Mr. Clancy? I just wanted to point out, it looks like from the survey, it looks like the property kind of narrows as it goes back, very slightly.